Members of the City Council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item. And no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. And once that item is called, both the public cards will be accepted. I have a question for our city attorney. Can we add an executive session after this meeting legally?
I don't know that we have a really a process to vote on the agenda tonight, do we? It's a force. Okay, so I would. Okay, so but do you need to vote on adding it to the vote agenda?
That would be my preference.
Okay. I would I would like to add a executive session to discuss land acquisition, employment, and possible litigation. Do I have a?
Mayor, I move that we add to this session an item for executive session to discuss state acquisition personnel or pending litigation.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Moore to go into executive session tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's your name. So I will ask now the city clerk to call item number one.
Good evening, Mayor. Item number one is presentation of Birmingham Road Middle Bridge Project. Public Works Director, Mr. Robert Scherri. Sorry, Sarah, later. Much better. [laughing]. We have a presentation tonight to talk about future improvements to Birmingham Road and what we're calling Middle Bridge. This is a recent aerial photo of the project location. It is very close to the Hampton Manor subdivision entrance. This map shows the flood zones. The pink is a difference between purple and pink is the percentage chance of flooding in the 100-year flood. There's different flood zones identified as zone A or AE. So this is just the flood zones, the pink being more likely to flood, which is the case that we saw in the 2009 storms. So this is just the flood map reference of this bridge location. Then to go over the existing conditions of the bridge, it's a 30-foot sill beam bridge. So the Hampton Manor subdivision entrance is adjacent to the bridge, and it is posted 10 tons, so currently buses do not go across this bridge. Some of the issues that identify this as a project is the elevation of the roadway is too low, so that during storm events, the water can overtop overtop the road. And in 2009, the floodwaters blocked the entrance to the subdivision. I want to show this slide just to highlight all the bridges in the city and what we've done so far and what's upcoming. So the top image is the Birmingham West Bridge, which was done completed in 2019. The bottom left is the Landrum Bridge, which was done in 2013, and the bottom right, Cogburn Bridge in 2012. We have four other bridges that are programmed for replacement, three by the state through their local bridge program, and then one through TESFLOs funding. So the Birmingham Middle is what we're talking about tonight, because that's funded with TESFLOs. And then the three GDOT bridges are the Birmingham East, the Hope and Freeman. And those are all broken in a batch of bridges that GDOT will hire consultant to design, and those have instructions done in the year 2024. That could change depending on how they're phase in the bridge batch. Again, we've got three bridges on Birmingham Road, the West, which was locally funded and completed in 2019. The middle that we're talking about tonight is projected for 2022. And the East is the GDOT-funded project. In 2015, we hired Moreland Altavelli to develop concepts for all three of those bridges. And the concept report for the Middle Bridge had some recommendations. The two we're talking about tonight are 60-foot wide or 6-foot long, sorry, concrete, concrete bridge or using box culverts with three 10-foot by 10-foot boxes. We have funding programs through TESFLOs except for $1.6 million. And we recently had BMK, who's helping us with our TESFLO projects, and to help us look at this concept report, look at the alternatives, help us with some design right of way estimates, as well as looking at constructability. BMK was very involved in our Birmingham West Bridge, went to that out for construction and developing the how the project was implemented and able to be constructed and only closed for those three months during the summer. I want to show two pictures of other bridges in Milton that are these same types that the concept alternative called for. The bottom left picture is Birmingham Highway, just north of Providence Road. Our legislature says that's a over 100-foot-long span for that bridge. It's the conventional concrete bridge. So the pictures are just the types that are described here, and these are the types that are recommended in the concept report. And then the triple 10 by 10 box culvert, this is also Birmingham Highway, just north of Landrum. So it's a, you can see what a triple box would look like. And the cost difference is shown on this slide. The construction timeline, they're relatively the same, and the box culvert might be a little closer to the nine to 10 months, depending on how we hit the construction bid and how weather impacts the project. But generally speaking, for either alternative, it's somewhere between nine and 12 months. I want to show you a few other bridges in the city and the states that those were constructed. The top two pictures are the Hopewell Bridge that's programmed by GDOT for replacement. That one was built in 1948. There were different bridge standards at the time these were built. It's trying to show the types of barriers, the distance from the white line to the bridge structure. So these are both older. Older construction bridge is Cogburn, built in 1986 on the bottom two pictures. And that's the Cogburn Bridge that is south of the Hopewell Francis Cogburn Roundabout. And then some recent construction, State Route 140 over Little River. That one was built in 2018. It was, if you remember, it was constructed, the existing lanes were left in place, so it was able to be constructed, keeping the existing bridge open. And then that bridge was demolished after traffic was moved to the new alignment. And that went up 24 months. And then the Birmingham West Culvert that was done in 2019, roughly five months with just the closure during the summer, the summertime when there were no buses needed to get across of it. I want you to bring up a few options we've used on previous projects. The top picture shows the stone facing that was added to the concrete wall that was done on Cogburn Road. This is south of Bethany Bend, near St. Francis High School. This is a bottomless culvert. And with the design of that one, we were able to have a wall that extended from the culvert up, created this barrier wall. That's not the case on all culverts. They don't all have these walls, but this was an option we were able to incorporate into that project. And then guardrail treatments are the pictures at the bottom. The left image is the painted guardrail that was done with Birmingham Hopewell when that roundabout was built. And then the picture on the right is another type of guardrail treatment. It's called core tin, which gives it a more rusted look. So our recommended concept for construction for this location is to use the triple 10 by 10 box culvert. It will raise the roadway about six feet, and we would recommend a closing of the road detour or remove the bridge and then replace it. So this is a drawing that was created with that concept that shows approximate easement and construction limits, as well as where the structure will be. So before we move forward with our next step, which would be hiring a designer to develop construction documents, we need to identify if we're going to move forward with a culvert or a bridge type of structure. And then any aesthetic considerations that need to be part of the design, which are guardrail treatment or if we want to try to do a concrete barrier. So the next steps are to procure design services for final engineering, and then we'll begin once we have design drawings, we'll begin right of way and schedule construction, get a ward, detour, and get the bridge replaced. So I wanted to go back to this slide. This is the information we want to discuss tonight and to get feedback. And BMK has some representatives here, too, that can help answer any questions about more details of the design and how we could move forward with it.
Let me ask, Tammy, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
I'll look up for Sarah and then also anyone else. Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Sarah. Just a question. Sarah, I know that the bridge is just to the outside of the Hampton subdivision, raising it six feet. What's the impact of that on the entrance of the subdivision?
So we will have to take the grade back into the subdivision. The front west side is common area to the subdivision. The east side is actually one of the lots that the house sits beyond the construction limits. But we would anticipate having to rebuild. I don't know if Jacob remembers the exact footage. Okay. You can speak a little more to how that that will tie in.
Excuse me, you look bad with that mask on. I can put it back up.
To answer your question, it's about 400 feet, the impacts going back up into the subdivision street. There are no house impacts, but actual roadway elevation, since it does change by six feet, it takes that 400 to.
Does it change the murky entrance?
Yes.
The presentation as well?
Yes.
Does that go away and get rebuilt?
It would be right of way to get a certification, homeowners association. But unfortunately, that stone wall that's there in the front that was permitted, who knows how long ago? Yes, it's all in the way.
Yeah. Okay. To clarify that, all in the way, does that mean that in some other location or some adjustment, it could be rebuilt back? Or is it a totally no way to put it?
An easy answer there would be you'd have to move the road all the way to the lake side. So if you wanted to relocate the road all the way to the south side, you could possibly avoid it, but you would incur other costs.
That's in order to keep the existing one?
Yes.
But theoretically, if we can't keep it, would there be a reproduction of that somewhere else in the mix of this?
I mean, it would be up to the city council if you wanted to do that possibility.
I guess what I would, from what I understand, it make, like you're saying, it wouldn't make financial sense, I'm sure, to move the road.
Right.
But obviously, in protection for the neighborhood subdivision there, you know, hate it for them to take the wall down or, you know, all their zone work and whatnot. I guess what I would ask, and did with council once, too, but that staff and you guys look at some options and work with them if we can afford for options where they could, you know, something could be put back that's reasonable or whatever. It may not be identical or the same magnitude or scope, but keep that in mind in the design.
The area there is so close to the creek, the existing creek. The bridge is narrow. All of that got permitted really close. It's in the flood zone. There's really no way to avoid the impacts to it, but putting it back would be an option for other way.
Anybody more questions, Sarah?
I favor the box culvert. Cars aesthetic treatments, I'm going to follow your lead. I can say it's floodwater, but you're less danger. What then are the options? There are a small stone wall, offish, hard rail with treatment. What is there? So I just ask those, but otherwise, I'm in support of it.
Well, like Sarah showed you, those are kind of optional features. Lot depends on how long that culvert needs to be, whether it needs a wall. If you have right of way issues, like you're in the marshland and you don't need to get out there, you can shorten that culvert and build a wall. And then you could put a stone face it on the wall. You could mow it if you were. But the preferred roadway option is guardrail. That's the cheapest, simplest, most manageable option.
Painted is fine, so that's where I would head, but you're my proxy if you see.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. All right, Tammy, you would please send the next item.
The next item is discussion of charter commission consideration frequency. Mr. Stephen Krakoff.
I'll take this one. When we discussed and voted on changing our charter commission protocol and not having a charter commission mandatory every five years, which was supported by the state and our city attorney, we also talked, and I think Councilmember Longoria brought up, and I was total in favor, and we talked about it, that we might want to have some kind of protocol so that, you know, we didn't just forget about it. And so I wanted to kind of bring that up. I think Steve has given us a lot of input or data from, you know, what other cities do. And, you know, one suggestion I might have, just like every year, I know our legislators will reach out to us and say, okay, this year, you know, is there anything that you guys see that you need or any changes we need to make or whatever? And we may say, yeah, you know, this is an issue here, or it's not, we're good. You know, maybe this is something as simple as, you know, at the beginning of the year, it's on the agenda and it comes up, you know, is there anything we need to discuss? Council or staff or the public have any, you know, items that are an issue with the charter that we might want to consider having a, you know, set a new charter commission review? So, you know, that's a simple way, but open to discussing it anymore. Anybody else have any ideas?
So one of my, one of my questions was, when we first discussed this, what came out of the charter commission last time we did it? And I didn't know this, but apparently we needed to do something to allow for our green space bond. And so if that's the case, then certainly we, or at least that's what the Milton Herald reported. So if that's the case, I just want to know, you know, what things like that we would need to have in order to, you know, do a green space bond, because obviously, we're all in favor of that and not shutting down a commission that would allow for that. So that's my question.
Look at my face. I wasn't sure.
Well, I guess to address that, though, if last time the charter was changed with the commission, and we were able to do the green space bond, that assumption would be we could do the same thing moving forward, correct, without a change? And I agree, there might be some other options or an issue that comes up, but as long as we had that option to make some, bring up a commission again, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of my thoughts on this one.
Right, and I wasn't necessarily trying to be difficult at the time that I suggested this, okay? What I was wanting to point out is that there's certain things in our charter that, and fully aware, we can change our charter, you know, the whole idea about who rules this and the other. We have the power to do what needs to be done around our city the way we see fit. Not an issue. But there are certainly, we certainly want to have and give our citizens the opportunity to engage in this process. And the charter commission was always that thing that they could look forward to, to engage in that process. By taking it off, taking that out of the charter as a mandatory thing to do, I don't, we're not, we're certainly not closing the door to them, but it has the appearance that we're closing the door for their input into that capability. So I just wanted to make sure that we keep something, some opportunity to engage our citizens in things that don't fall into the day-to-day kind of challenges that we face, but more the strategic or long-term or construction infrastructure. I don't know what word you want to associate with it, but, but the things that the charter actually covers. And so I just thought it made sense for us to, you know, wake up in January every year and say, hey, citizens, is there anything that you guys think needs attention that you would want to invest your time in? And if nothing happens, nothing happens, that's okay.
I'm sorry, Paul, you and then Paige. I think, I think you're on the right track, Joe. My, my take on it would be if our prompt historically has been every five years, that's where it has been required historically, to mandate a review that's more frequent than that, even if it's just annually, I think actually is a step in the wrong direction where it's more frequent than it needs to be. If it's, if it's served us fine for five years at the five-year benchmark currently, I would propose we consider a language that would say not more than five years, but available for consideration on an annual basis as needed. So you're not necessarily engaging staff in a preparation of an assessment that's a formal work task every year to do that. But if there are things that are contemporary that need assessment that would require a charter commission, we still have the language that will allow us to do that, but it's not mandated for a formal review any sooner than the five-year pattern that we're currently on. Who for that?
Yes, I was kind of going to go back. I mean, really what Paul was saying and Joe was saying was the last two charter commissions have been completely different. The one 10 years ago, or yeah, maybe 10, 10 years ago, that was pretty massive changes to the charter. You know, district lines are being changed, everything's being changed. The one that I was on five years ago should have just gone through the council. It was grammatical stuff, easy cleanup stuff. So I think having the option to where if we do a kind of a massive change, that'd be great to get the citizens engaged, involved, but the, but what I was on five years ago was probably not necessary for a charter commission. But it's good to have the option.
Rick?
I guess I'm, I'm okay with what everybody's proposing. Take away the formality of having to have one. Just jog my memory when you said something about district lines. We just had a census. Once we get the census data and we know where that is, and do we have to do anything unique, draw and balance the district lines? How does that work? Does that have to be a charter commission, or is that something we can do as a council with staff input? We don't have, we don't have to initiate anything. They'll do that for us.
Okay. So anybody else? I don't know if did we really come up with a plan?
So I understand we don't, this isn't something we want to do every year. We don't want to change our opportunity to have a charter commission from every five years to every year. That, that doesn't make sense. I guess what I was trying to suggest is this is more like a, this snooze button on your alarm, right? You can keep hitting it until you actually have to wake up. Once you wake up, you don't worry about the alarm again for another 24 hours. So to me, having something that reminds us every year, is there something we need to do in terms of reviewing the charter, is only a reminder. It's not a call to action. It's not saying we have to do something other than consider it. And again, we're putting the onus on our citizens to step forward and say, hey, look, this is something that we think is worthy of discussion or worthy of our time and effort to take a look. And so, so that's really where I was trying to head there.
So does it make sense, like I said early on, just, you know, once, you know, beginning of the year, have a tickler where it's on our agenda? And again, we may hit the snooze button for 10 years, but at least by having it there, we're reminded that is there something, you know, it may be a five-minute discussion, but there may be, to Laura's point, there's a, you know, an issue because we want to do a green space bond, and it has to be changed on the charter. I'm not, I'm just using that as a, but.
Yeah, that's good.
You know.
At the end of the day, I don't have a, I'm not going to follow my sword over it. I think it's, we make a measure of it, as long as we're having a conversation.
We're not preventing anybody from.
As long as it doesn't create a work task.
I'm with you.
Staff is beyond just a check-in.
How about caveat, since right now we only have one every five years, or that's what we'd had? So we also add a stipulation where we can only have and actually have a charter commission review every five years?
Well, I think if.
And what I mean, what I mean by that.
Have one every year if you needed it.
Okay. Now, I was going to say if that was your concern, that we just, it was too much work for citizens and staff.
So my underlying point on this is we weren't asking the community before, except for every five years. And now we're suggesting we're.
And now we're suggesting we're going to engage every year. When we're talking about it going away, the need for it being diminished. So in a diminished need for it, where it was only five years interim, five-year interims before, why would we increase the frequency of asking that question when it was only five years?
You mean with his tickler idea?
Yeah.
But see, I think it's different.
I should, I think it should be five years unless there is a reason.
I think that's what we're saying.
Comes up.
That's the point.
We're suggesting that you have to measure it every year in order to determine whether there's a reason or not.
No, no.
I'm suggesting you only measure it if a reason comes up.
I think that's what the intent is.
There's a nuance there. There's a nuance is we're asking it every year, or we're not asking it every year, but we're waiting for something to rise to the level where we would need to do it. So there's a nuance there. It's not, it's not, it's not a big deal, as long as it doesn't create a significant work task for staff.
Ken?
That's good.
Okay. Laura, you're good? Okay. All right, is there any public comment on this, Tammy?
There is none, ma'am.
Okay. If there's nothing else on this agenda item, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session as we added to our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Moore to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation, land acquisition, or personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ruth?[740.63] Ruth? All right, I want, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Thank you, yes, me.
Motion.
I want to adjourn.
Please.